Mr. Canales, if you can call roll please.
Ms. Carisella?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. Perlamis? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Calvez?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Van Ness was excused tonight?
Yes, thank you. Liz, can you do the flag salute please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll read the, I'll read the mission statement tonight. The Glen Rock School District founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens. Alright, so tonight we don't have a student council rep report, but I did want to do a presentation on just well, the, one, I'll say high school rankings, but it's also just rankings overall in the school district and the perspective of a board member. And then we'll get on to our public comments and our regular agenda, just based on the flow of our regular meetings. So, thank you all for being here today. I know that this is a off, an off-schedule meeting and many of us are on vacation, so thank you. Alright, so I think I'll just turn this way as well so I can talk to everyone. I don't have anyone that has my back. Where do I point it? Over there, okay. Okay, alright. So, part of the reason why I'm doing this meeting is just to talk about like understanding what school rankings, what they are, who the different players in, in the school ranking market are, what are the things that we can do to influence the ranking, whether as administrators, as Board of Education, as well as parents, as students, the, as a community. And I wanted to take this presentation and do it from the perspective of a trustee. I think you're all, including, you know, I'm talking both to the board as well as to the public that's here today. Everyone is so used to us sitting down and then like receiving information, not so much delivering on to you, you know, what we understand about the things that we're voting on, talking on, and things like that. And so I find that this would be useful because I've had many conversations with people. It's commonly, if you're running for Board of Education, as you know, here we are in an election cycle right this minute, you know, you get asked this question often. I think that as a community, if we're going to resolve some of the problems that, you know, we, we've agreed on that need to be addressed, it would be nice for us to have like a nice, common, you know, shared understanding of where that baseline is. Okay. And so, and then finally, you know, like what are some places where we can go next? So this again is going to be from a perspective of a board member. You're not going to see me presenting to you lots of data specific to NJSLA scores. I might have some of that for perspective in there, but it's not, my goal isn't to be an administrator or an educator because I'm not. I do anesthesia. I don't, I'm not a teacher. So, the next step of this is really going to be from, from, like aside from the conversations that are, you're going to hear here, like that we're going to have some open conversations here about, you know, what it is that, that I found on, on this journey. I'm probably going to have some questions that are asked of me that I might not know the answer to. And you all might come up and ask questions at the podium and I might be able to answer them and I might not have answered to them. So this is going to be an ongoing, you know, discussion. Additionally, administration is going to be able to do a presentation from their perspective. In all honesty, you know, Mr. Van Ness asked if he could do the presentation first and I said, no, I really want to do this. I want to, I want to start here first and make sure that we have a great, you know, foundation before we actually dive back into the data and then find out, you know, more. And so I just told you why I'm presenting first, you know, again, to create a baseline of understanding, to clarify how rankings are determined. I also want to talk about showing how Glen Rock has performed historically and to identify ways to strengthen our outcomes and also make sure that we're focusing on authentic student success, not solely just numbers. It's important to recognize that rankings do shape public perception. You know, there's many ways that I'm going to show you here how our public perception actually does feed directly into the ranking structure. But, you know, this is also, whereas from the education or the educator standpoint, you know, we don't always want to just put pressure on our teachers to, you know, like teach to the, teach only to the test or, you know, to focus only on numbers as a factor of student growth. However, the community's ask is also that, you know, we are concerned about the direction and the growth of our students. We're concerned about making sure that they're on par with their peers. We're concerned about how it affects whether people want to come here and live here and whether it's the reason, you know, the same town that we all, you know, want it to be. We're concerned about that and we recognize that. And I think that this is just, you know, covering some of the ask that you have asked of us. So just to talk about the ranking landscape, there's, there's a variety of ranking outlets. You have US News and World Report, which people are, you know, commonly aware of. They started ranking high schools in 2007. They do an annual ranking and its focus is mainly on academic performance and on some equity. It is still active. Next is Nish.com. They started ranking high schools in 2013 and they are also annual. They have a mixed data pool of, for their focus and I'll dive into it a little bit more as we go. And they do survey reviews, so I'll also dive into that. There is also a Department of Education School Scoring System where they do summative scores and it's based on your, you know, the park or NJSLA proficiency scores and graduation rate and chronic absenteeism. And they come up with like a one to 100 scoring system and they're still active. New Jersey Monthly was biennial until 2018. 2018 was the last time that they did scoring. And they use the Department of Education data with the growth proficiency scores and also some readiness. They're discontinued. School Digger is another one that I did find. They do annual data and it's only based on test scores. It is still active, however, most news sources don't really use it. And then Newsweek. Newsweek was doing it until 2016. It's a national list. It is currently discontinued. And just so we have a baseline for the, the park or the NJSLA scores, you're, you may be used to us talking about our NJSLA scores annually because it's part of the testing for our kids. So, previous, prior to 2019, they, they were called PARK Scores or Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College Careers. And it was just the state online testing and it, it measures, you know, like the proficiency and you're looking for like fours and fives, proficient level or above. A four and five met or exceeded expectations. Levels one through three did not meet or partially met expectations. So what you'll see here is a media influence map. So in the center, you'll have your original ranking sources. You'll have your US News and World Report, your NISH, your Department of Education summative evaluation. You'll have your NJ Monthly, your School Digger, and then you can see Newsweek. And then to the left, you'll have like the secondary interpreters, which are, again, the Department of Education. While they're in the center because they do have some sort of like a scoring ranking system that they do, they're also a primary source of data, meaning that the NJSLA scores that you get are then sourced and kept at the state level. And then that information then gets pushed out to a variety of places such as US News and World Report, Nish.com, you know, like any of the web, the digital sources like your Star Ledgers, your North Jersey, your Bergen Record, your Patch. All of that information they can take from the Department of Education website or all of that information also can go to your original ranking sources. College Board also feeds information. They have independent data firms. RTI International is the one that US News and World Report uses for their methodology. And then you also have educational analysts who are paid specifically to, you know, interpret this data. This just shows kind of like the path from data to headlines. Again, you have your original ranking sources. Your data, you know, gets fed into those original ranking sources. And then you'll see that there's a double-headed arrow there with the media amplifiers and the original ranking because specifically Nish.com, you know, like perception does actually feed into your rank in Nish.com. So if the community tends to put in information because they do seek surveys. So if your surveys are positive, then it actually helps your ranking. If your surveys are negative, it negatively affects your ranking. And so that it can be bidirectional and can create either a negative feedback loop or a positive feedback loop. So I was trying to find some like idea of like how these ranking structures differ. So, US News and World Report is one that's more like well-known. And so you have your state proficiency. That covers about 20% of it. Your student growth, your student growth scores cover about another 20%. Equity and underserved performance is about 10%. Your college readiness, which is your, you know, AP international undergraduate scoring, that's 40%. Graduation and attendance, like chronic absenteeism is about 10%. And then you can see New Jersey Monthly, and I have some like unknown percentage there and things like that because they, there were different articles and they split it up into different ways and it didn't really fully give their, their methodology. But it also ended in 2018, so it's hard for me to find out historically what they used and how they determined their scores when, you know, their methodology isn't applicable anymore. NISH has, you know, like low, moderate, high. They're not fully quantitative. And so, you know, they rank it by saying that there's, there's student and parent surveys and they also have a perception of how parents and students feel served and that creates like a different feedback loop. But they specifically rank private high schools using composite SAT scores, total top college scores, college enrollment, culture and diversity grade, your parent-student surveys on overall experience, and a student-teacher ratio. And they rank that, you know, anywhere from 10 to 30%. So I, I took as much data as I could find looking either in archives of, of different websites. I looked at NISH, I looked at NJ Monthly, I looked at the School Digger, I used US News. I, I looked, the national rank is referring to what US News and World Report had, and then Nish.com. And I created a matrix from 2016 to 2025 and you'll see just a variety of numbers. There's, there's, there's a lot here. And I'm going to break down some of the information over the next several slides as well as tell, like kind of talk about it now. So when you look at the data, you'll see that some have HS next to them and some don't. And it's because some of the data that I was able to find, and again, this is in, if I could get primary source verification, that was preferable. So if I was able to go to Nish.com and just say, what are, you know, what is the current ranking, then, you know, I'm happy to get that. All of these sources don't, don't really list all of their historical data. So they don't go say, oh, you know, in 2018, you were ranked this and then now 20, you know, 2025, you're ranked this because I think they try to force you to pay for that data. So I was able to use archive.org and to look at certain websites and then to go back, you know, multiple years to see that, you know, what it was. I was able to use a variety of like patch articles that pointed to the numbers. There were times though that the various numbers that I looked at, it might have been, say, reported as a 42 on patch and then I look at, you know, Bergen Record and they said it's 43. And since I don't have the primary source to verify it, you know, there may be a discrepancy. So when you all, you know, go back and go through and look at these, just kind of keep that in mind that it was very, very, very difficult to, you know, find all of this and, and there are going to be some gaps. Because for instance, in 2018, I couldn't find a national rank at all. So, School Digger, you can see there, the high school, they ranked high school as well as the overall district. Sometimes I was able to find that they ranked the high school, but then other times I've been able to find that they ranked the overall district as well. And then some articles that list the ranking don't actually state whether they're talking about the high school ranking or if they're talking about the school district overall. There's discrepancies there in terms of the data. So, School Digger, you have anything from, you know, 15 all the way to 42. New Jersey Monthly, that ended in 2018, but in 2016, it said number 25 for the school district, number 10 for the, for the high school. And then in 2018, it was number two, which honestly was a very controversial year for them. And, and then they went out of business after that. US News and World Report has us ranked anywhere from 13 all the way up to 2024, 66. Our national rank hasn't been anywhere from an unknown number in 2018 or 137 all the way up to 1359. Nish.com has ranked us from anywhere from 19 to 53 as a school district and I see 97 as a high school, but I don't have like high school data on every single year. So, you know, our strongest year according to just the numbers would have been, you know, 2018 when New Jersey Monthly ranked us number two in the state. And the, the one thing that is also important to note is that when I put an asterisk there by year reported. Year reported is important because the, the scores are from like maybe two years prior. So if we're looking at, for instance, like 20, like this year, 2025 are based on 2022 and 2023 data. So 2016 would have been based on 20, you know, 13 and 2014 data. So you can go like back and know that when you're looking at something, you know, like you have to just remember that it's, it's, it's kind of like in motion. If you're making changes now, they're not going to be reflected for about two years. Also, NJSLA assessments from 2019 to 2020 and 2020 and 21 because of the COVID years were canceled. And so there's also these things called student growth percentiles or median student growth percentiles that were not calculated for the 2019 to 2020, 2020 to 21, and 21 to 22 years. And that did have an effect on, you know, the ranking structure for those years. So generally speaking, over all of those different ranking structures, you know, what are some of the things that drive, like the six primary things that drive, you know, your, your rankings across all the systems? So you're going to have academic proficiency, just making sure that you have strong NJGPA or NJSLA scores, your ELA and math, your ELA and math proficiency task scores, student growth, which is year-over-year progress by cohorts. So the student growth percentile or SGP is, is, is an important concept and it's something honestly I didn't fully understand until I, I did this presentation. So when they're looking at student growth, it's a number that you can have from like one to 100. And so typically I'm like, well, then I want 100. Well, it's hard for you to actually achieve 100 because it's, it's represented. So for instance, if you have, let's just say, an NJSLA score of 650 at, on, in the fourth grade. In the fifth grade, you're, you know, 675. In the sixth grade, you're 550. You know, and then they take it as a cohort. So they look at, in the fourth grade, you have a group of people that scored just like you in fourth grade. And in fifth grade, you have a group of people that scored just like you in fifth grade. And then sixth grade, they, the, the student growth proficiency score would be based on how you did compared to those kids that were in fourth and fifth grade that scored just like you. Did you do better than them or did you do worse than them? So if you're at 50, that means that you are actually tracking. You're doing as well as your peers are doing. If you're in a school district that's already performing at the, like a very high level, if we're already getting scores that are way above the state level, if getting a 50 or so or like even a little above that just means that you're on par with other test takers who are doing just as well as you are doing in your cohort. So that I think was important to note because I was, when I look at the numbers, I'm like, well, is 50 good? Is 60 good? Is 70 good? Shouldn't we be at 100? But if you're already scoring really well and much better than average, to be able to get 100 is not really, it's not really achievable because you're already closer to the top of, of performance. So that, that is just something for us to note. It's not something that, because it's also going to be different based on the grade. There might be areas of opportunity at, you know, for instance, sixth grade versus ninth grade and/or at the high school level or maybe it's, you know, 10th grade. Or, you know, there's, there's the overall student growth, you know, as a, as a, as a school system, as a school district or maybe just the high school or middle school. But then there's also individual grade stuff and I won't present on that. That's not my, you know, role here. But I, from a concept, I thought that it was important for me to share that. So the equity and subgroup performance, I'll speak a little bit more about that later, but you want to be able to close achievement gaps. There are different subgroups, you know, Latino groups, black, African-American, students with disabilities, as well as students that receive free or reduced lunch. Those are all subgroups. College readiness, your AP, your graduation and attendance rates, your absenteeism. They reward low absenteeism. School climate and engagement, some element of a survey, especially with the Nish.com. So Glen Rock strengths, we have a top-tier graduation rate, you know, greater than 95%. High AP participation and pass rates. We have a strong overall proficiency in the ELA and math. Highly qualified staff and stable, you know, leadership. We have robust community and, and parent engagement. But then when it comes down to like where the rankings might penalize us, subgroup performance gaps. So the rankings, you know, not only look at how well our students perform overall because they're also looking at how evenly that success is shared across every group of, of students. And so, you know, even just the small differences between those student groups can, can count as gaps. Like an example that I read about was like if you are performing at like 80% on average and then any one of those student groups that I told you about, whether it's black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, or Pacific, yeah, Pacific Islander, Hawaiian, and also students that are receiving free or reduced lunch and students with disabilities. If any of those groups are, let's say, you know, let's say that any one of those people are receiving 65%, then you have a gap between, you know, what they're, what that group is getting and then what your overall student population is getting. And that gap is going to be considered a negative against you. If you had, let's say, 65% for that subgroup and then the rest of it was 75%, even though your highest achievement is lower, they actually reward it, which is odd. So limited AP diversity, they, they reward breadth, not depth, meaning that they reward lots of AP classes, like more of a diverse AP offering as opposed to just the number of students that you have in AP education. So, you know, that's also going to be a limitation of the district because if you have a bigger school district, you're able to offer more classes because you just have more people that are going to be able to fill the classrooms. So that is going to be a challenge, you know, to improve. But it doesn't mean that we can't evaluate making other classes that we currently offer, AP classes, and, and make sure that, you know, there are students that would want to take it. The growth ceiling effect, I spoke about that a little bit. It's just the already high proficiency limit. You're, you're not able to gain as much because if you're already somewhat in the, in the top of the group. We had a slight absenteeism increase post-COVID in 2021. It was 10.7% and it dropped back down in 2022 to 2.9% where it currently is. 2023 to 2024, which is the most recent data that we have, it's 2.9%. And then the survey for NISH may lag perception-wise. And I'll speak about that. So, I'll speak about it now. NISH, it's just, it's a common thing that people use not only just for our schools, but just for the community. They want to know, you know, if you're moving, you know, which community do you want to move into? Where do you want to stay away from? And for the schools, for high schools specifically, they have a variety of things. Over the next two pages or two slides, you'll see their methodology and the weight that they place. So academic grades, they weigh it at 50%. So you have state assessment proficiency, your college enrollment data, and there are survey responses on academics from students and parents. Your teacher's grade weighs 15% and that includes teacher salary, absenteeism, state test results, and survey responses on teachers from students and parents. Culture and diversity is a factor and it is 12.5% and it's based on the racial and economic diversity as well as survey responses on school culture and diversity from students and parents. It also has the parent and student surveys on their overall experience with the school. And that's 12 and a half percent and you can get a scale of one to five. And it's just a survey of, of responses based on what your overall experience is as a student or a parent in the district. The resources and facilities grade is about 5% and it's based on the expenses per student, the staffing, and the survey responses on facilities from the students and parents. The club activities grade is two and a half percent, the sports grade, two and a half percent, again, based on the surveys related to the student experience and the parent experience on clubs, activities, athletic facilities, athletic programs, et cetera. So you might not be able to fully see this from where you are, but this, I just pulled this up on November 1st. So your niche ranking on the, the high school. Because niche, there's Glen Rock High School, there's all four of our middle schools, there's also the elementary schools ranked separately, and then there's a Glen Rock Board of Education score, which is really just the overall school district score. But the scores, if you look, they don't actually, the things don't match even though there is an overlap. So here you're looking at the Glen Rock High School. We have an overall niche grade of A. Our academics are A-, teachers are A. Sports, A-, college prep is A-. For diversity, we get a B. For clubs and activities, we get C+. Resources and facilities, we get a C+ and for food, we get a C. This also you won't be able to see from here, but I pulled up some of the, the ranking factors and the, the different profiles. So for clubs and activities, it's saying 81% of students and, and parents agree that there are plenty of clubs. 50% believe that students and, students and parents have believed that their clubs and organizations are funded well, et cetera. Where you'll be able to see, and this presentation will be available for you so you can actually see it more closely, are some of the comments or the actual, like when you look at each of these things and you populate them and you open them up, you're able to see what the survey responses were that were underneath it. And many of them are either, you know, saying that they feel like they had a good response here, that they love their teachers, love their academics. Some are saying that they do not love their teachers or do not love their academics or do not love administration or do not like the community. It's a variety of things. Some talk about how they feel like the ranking structure has gone down. And, you know, I think for all of us, it's, it's interesting because it would feel like it's safe to just say like, hey, how, how do you feel about your school? Or how do you feel about your school district? And then you respond, this is how I feel. It's just also of note that niche rankings are also heavily based on what you say about your school and what you say about your school district or your teaching staff or your sports and things like that. So our food, for instance, is, it's just interesting because we spend a good amount of money for the food and we have the ability to cater and tailor it to a lot of things that some other school districts don't have. But yet we're a C+. But yet, we're a C plus versus not, so it'd be interesting to, you know, hear and understand why the surveys for certain things are high or low, depending on, you know, who wrote it or when they wrote it. Also of note, when I pulled this data, there were only eleven responses. So our, our three-point whatever score is only based on eleven responses. And maybe only one of them from this year, and so that really does impact the actual score. And you'll notice from year to year, the variability, because I took a look at what Ridgewood looked like. And they're like number thirteen in the, in, in the state. And I was just interested to see that when it comes down to academics, teachers, you know, just some of our core things that they actually ranked the same. They both had As, but then when it came to clubs and sports, or, you know, like other things, they had different scores. And their ranking, their, their survey responses were a bit different. And they also had more survey responses to help with the data, so that's just something to note. This, these are just like additional, you know, comments and surveys, and you'll see we have eleven reviews. And there are six of them are five star, three of them are four star, one of them is two star, and one of them is one star. And that is what our overall ranking is also based on. So the survey is collected from, at the K to, for K to twelve by the company, is to provide the qualitative data, their one to five scale. They use like this Bayesian method where they're calculating their scores. And it starts off, but all schools start off with like a, a three point nine or something. And then as your scores, as your, your score will improve as you get more surveys and you get more data input into them. To get you closer to your true score. But the fewer scores that you have, the fewer reviews that you have, the less that your, your score is really going to be just pulled closer to what the average is, which is like the three point nine. You can do surveys through direct request, you could just go, go on there, sign up and create an account. And choose Glen Rock High School, Middle School, your elementary school, your school district. And opt in to fill out a survey and talk about, you know, the things that you love or don't like in, in Glen Rock. But they also do this to kind of collect more data for their program. So they have a link to a thousand dollar school survey sweepstakes that they recommend that the school districts like can put out. And you can send it out to get, to encourage participation by saying that you're going to be involved in this scoring. Some school districts opt out of doing it, because it is just collecting more data for another program. But if it is important to the community and it's important, you know, to have these numbers, like, we could turn around and claim the accounts for the different schools. We could claim, right now, they're not claimed, so we're not controlling, you know, some of the inputs and the data that is, is there in, in niche dot com. So that, I'll talk about that at the end. New Jersey Monthly's methodology, they're continued, discontinued, but they had a variety, they used Leiflin Associates, which is defunct. They, they no longer in business after the twenty eighteen ranking. They use some version of the Department of Education's School Performance Reports, as well as, you know, different weightings and things like that. And Glen Rock was ranked number two in, in the state over all of these other schools. One other thing, you know, to point out with, well, I'll talk about it next. So twenty nineteen, US News and World Report, they changed their formula. So I can go back and, and show you kind of like the difference between what happened before twenty nineteen, when we were, I don't know, thirteen or something like that in the state. And then after twenty nineteen, when we were about forty. They changed their formula in a, in a major way, they changed it based on subgroup reporting. They, they changed it based on the test proficiency averages, they changed it based on the college curriculum breadth. Even to the point where they had twenty-seven, in, in twenty nineteen and before, before twenty nineteen, you were ranked based on twenty-seven hundred schools. They only ranked twenty-seven hundred schools. And then after twenty nineteen, that number of schools that they ranked you against were seventeen thousand schools. So that number, just because the denominator changed, is also something significant. So that moved a lot of people around at like the state level. The, the schools that were at the very, very, very top nationally, still kind of stayed somewhere around the top. But there was a lot of shakeup depending on, on the school makeup that made the difference there in twenty nineteen. So, again, with the subgroups, I just wanted to mention, because sometimes when we report this out, it's important for you to know that our subgroups. If we have less than twenty students in any specific subgroup, so if we have less than twenty, if we're reporting on like fifth grade math scores. And we have less than twenty black students, we're not going to report on that subgroup, because, to protect student privacy. And so if we don't report on that subgroup, then it doesn't actually go into the state's website. And it then, therefore, it also then doesn't go to US News and, and World Report to determine their rankings. However, if you do have, let's say, twenty-two students, if you're coming from a school district that has that small of a subgroup. It does, you know, statistically, impact you that much more, because you have a smaller group of students compared to a larger school, which has a larger pool. You know, to help spread that out and put less pressure on those students to perform. So just kind of like ranking algorithms and how they all keep evolving in twenty twenty-one and beyond. The Inside Higher Ed, they just said that the US News continued refining indicators for underserved students. And reweighted college, college readiness slightly. And so Glen Rock's college readiness helped stabilize its rank despite heavier equity emphasis. NJ SBA has warned that, you know, they don't want us to specifically chase rankings. But they want to focus on metrics that can be controlled, like growth, subgroup support, transparency. You know, focusing on those, the growth of our kids is, is important. And so what these changes, you know, mean for Glen Rock, our strength again is in our AP participation, our graduation, our proficiency remains. You know, we remain stable and high performers. The rank sensitivity now, you know, will depend much more on closing equity gaps between those subgroups that we talked about. And then demonstrating year, yearly student growth and making sure that not only just as a school district, that we are moving and making sure that our, our kids are on track. With other kids and even exceeding the expectations by far of other kids, because that's what we want. But we also want to make sure that we're doing that and, you know, a, a grade level. Like, is sixth grade performing, is seventh grade performing the way that we want them to, is eighth grade? Or do we have like dips in certain grade levels that we really need to see what's going on at this grade level and what's changing there? You know, you know, so that we can make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing for our kids. To maintain a top tier placement under these evolving formulas, we can consider, again, expanding subgroup supports to raise equity index scores. We can diversify AP offerings to increase the curriculum breadth. We can communicate context, like from a board perspective or administration perspective when rankings fluctuate. And then as a community, we can also decide, do we want to opt in to participating in the niche surveys? So that we can actually get the, the data, you know, updated there. Because even when I looked today, the math proficiency scores and reading proficiency scores are not accurate to what our actual proficiency scores are. By four, like, something was like forty, forty-nine percent when we're, I think, eighty or eighty-five? So it's not, it's not accurate. So potential immediate, a potential immediate action plan. Anything that we determine, you know, like, one, we really need to understand the point of view of our administrators. We need to understand the, the teachers, we need to have another presentation from them, addressing some of these issues that, that I've brought up. And, you know, making sure that what we're looking at, you know, we're able to put the Glen Rock lens fully on it. I don't have all of the, the access to like all of our scores and data and things like that. Actually, at the next meeting, we're going to have a presentation on the NJ SLA scores. And, and, and I've already seen them, because I looked them up in the student performance reports and they look pretty good. So I look forward to that presentation. And then to see, you know, like, what does that mean, you know, in terms of a track and trajectory and where we're going. So focus areas here, AP access, expanding participation or supports. If we do that, it could raise college readiness scores. Looking at subgroup equity, again, I, I spoke about like English language learners or Hispanic Latino. Black Pacific Islander group, students with disabilities. And anybody that is eligible to receive free or reduced lunch. All of those subgroups, you know, while we might not be able to see the published data, because some of those subgroups may be small. We just really want to make sure that we are on track and working towards narrowing that gap. And, you know, communicating that out and, and also receiving information when you feel like you're, one of, your children fits into one of those subgroups. And it's not receiving services that help to, you know, raise that underserved index. Public data literacy, just kind of, the goal, again, of this presentation was just to kind of talk about just the, you know, you know, thirty thousand foot view of this information. And for us to now move forward, having like a general, you know, even understanding of what it is that we're seeing. And hopefully, I'll have this presentation of, you know, available to you, and then you'll be able to take a look at it and then, you know, ask questions back. And, you know, I'm happy to answer them or address them at, you know, future meetings. And again, perception, you know, highlighting the student, the district's success, improving community engagement. And if, if we're deciding that the niche scores are important to us as a community, then, you know, actively going in there to talk about the things that you find that are positive about your children's education. And then also communicating to us the things that you, you know, want to, you know, improve on. Long-term strategic goals, again, enhancing curriculum breadth, career pathways, including vocational pathways. While that isn't, you know, like, just a, a metric for the ranking structure. It is just something that is just a good idea for our kids, just to make sure that they know that they have all options available to them. Even the possibility of launching like a data dashboard, where we're able to talk about, you know, this data transparently. And you're able to see, you know, annually, like, you can see, like, this is where we are as a school district, and this is where we're progressing. And oh, NJ SLA scores are anticipated to come out at this time or that time, and, you know, we can go from there. We can strengthen articulation in math and literacy, although, you know, let's take a look at our scores when they get reported on next week. Differentiated instruction, we can talk about that another time, and then leveraging the climate surveys. Thanks. So also, like, what are, what are some realistic expectations? Just for like, for instance, the NJ Monthly, the difference between a ten and a forty and, 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 you know, like, your, your top schools. Would be potentially like two points out of a hundred points. Like, so when you're looking at some of the top schools and you're at the top of that index. The number of points that you're using to just basically change and move the needle a little bit is, is, it's significant. Focusing on sustained excellence and making sure that, you know, like, we're, you know, pushing for the things that are winning, and also looking at the things that are not working. Also, just so, it's, so for US News and World Report, especially before twenty nineteen. When I said that they went from using twenty-seven hundred schools, which was public schools, to seventeen thousand schools. That meant they included magnet schools, they included private schools and charter schools, and all of these other school types that were not previously included. So back when we were, you know, let's say twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. That data didn't include private schools, charter schools, magnet schools. So in certain ways, like, that's, that's the kind of data that has us, for instance, in number two position over Bergen County academies. Because they did not include schools that had specialized admission. So in our current U, US News and World ranking. The top ten high schools are all magnet schools or specialized high schools that admit only high achieving students. Milburn High School, which was the first public school that was on the list, was actually number twelve. So if you look at the top twenty schools in New Jersey, only four of the top twenty are public schools. And some of the ones that are on there tend to be, there's a couple that are regional schools as well. So it is, it is a snapshot in time, and it's something that we want to work with the community to focus on. Like, where are the areas and opportunities for, you know, success? And to consider, like, maybe putting some sort of like annual presentation together where we can address, like, where we are with the rankings. Where we can address, you know, like, the feedback and, and also see, you know, if we're on the trajectory to doing what we need to be doing as a school district and as a community. I, I put on there issuing clear messaging when rankings are released. An example is, you know, I know that some of our elementary schools just, you know, were released with the rankings, and so that came up on social media. But I think that we can, you know, figure out a more formal, you know, continuous way that you can expect to receive notification. And perhaps even get an annual presentation every fall about this kind of information, just so that you're aware and that you can communicate with us. So just some Q and A and discussion, I would say, you know, I, I'll try, I don't know, we're probably not going to be able to post anything on the website, because we're out this week. But next week, we'll be able to post the presentation up there. And then the question that I would like to know from the community is that, like, what questions or priorities do you want us to consider as we are continue aligning? You know, with our academic improvement and our district vision? So just take a look, you know, give us feedback, I think we're, we're all interested in hearing what you have to say. And then for the board, I, I think, you know, like, you'll also have opportunity to now, you know, since I have given the presentation. You know, go through the data and then ask the additional questions. And then when we get our NJ SLA presentation next week, then you'll be able to marry some of that information that we learned today. Into that conversation for NJ SLA and how that might actually affect our future rankings. Because again, everything is almost like two years behind. And so, and then for the administration, which I'll ask for something subsequent presentation. Where are there areas of opportunity that we can improve on, what is possible with the resources and the student population that we have? For instance, I mentioned the whole idea of like increasing our AP classes. Like, if we decided to offer more classes to increase the amount of offerings and variety for our students, is that really feasible for our school district? Or is it that we're just such a small school district that, you know, that, that we can't really do that? And that is it. And I have more sources than that, and they're all in the notes section, and you'll be able to see those presentations. So, thank you, and what questions do you all have?
So. So I'm glad that we're starting to talk about the ranking. I think for, for years, we just say, everything is great, and we closed our eyes, and finally, we're, we're speaking about that. I think it's just concerning to me to do this conversation with no administration in the room, to respond and actually act upon that. We have to look deep into the data and really understand what's going on and what's the element. So I'm just like randomly opened the Newsweek results, and I see that Glen Rock High School math proficiency is seventy percent. While Ridgewood is one hundred percent and Fairlon is eighty percent. There's no reason in the world that Glen Rock will be at seventy when two neighboring towns are at one hundred and eighty. So we need to look at the, deep dive into the data and really understand what's driving it and what are the issues. And I think everybody will agree that the first priority should be in math.
Anybody else? Yes?
Just say, thanks for, there was a ton of data you just spit at us. And I think part of the challenge we have up here is exactly what Mr. Cohen just did. A lot of people just open up and take a look at data, and with this really starts to, since this is, they call it normalizing the data, right? So we can, we can take a look at different data streams, we have to really understand what they mean side by side. And compare them to each other to understand what that data means and what it's telling us, and not just say, well, this number two rank. If there's magnet schools that are blocking every public school out of the state, there's a reason why Glen Rock's never going to be in, in that basket. So thanks for starting the conversation. Thanks for putting some of those, putting some, some of those highlights on what it is that we're actually looking at. Because it's very hard as a trustee, walking around on the weekends, to hear these responses. And my favorite question is, where did you hear that? And it's not a question of doubt, it's just, well, what, what's your source? How, like, I'd love to take that information back and think about it, but where did you hear it from? That's just vetting your sources, so this is the beginning, great stuff.
And I would say that I chose to do the presentation today, I mean, again, we all know why, why we're here today. And happy to move on to that agenda as well. But doing it here today as part of the, there are some changes that are, are being made. And not waiting until, well, one, next week's agenda, we have three presentations that are going to take up a, a chunk of time. And I think that this was quite a And I think that this was quite a lengthy presentation that needed its own moment. And our only next two meetings are, you know, right before Thanksgiving and Christmas. And, you know, what I'm hearing is a sense of urgency from the community. So I chose to do it today and, you know, spent the whole weekend preparing for it. So, yes, Ms. Duncan.
I just want to echo Dan, thank you. That was so much information, I had to take a lot of time. I don't think we've never not talked about it. I remember, I think I mentioned it earlier too, you had presented on this a few years ago to the board when there were some questions in the community, so it's ongoing discussion. The two slides I really, that stood out to me was where rankings penalize us. I thought that was really great information that we can definitely build from. And I found it very interesting that New York, New Jersey, I'm sorry, Monthly had us number-two and then the next year they were done. And I feel like that's the number we hear so often. Glen Rock was number-two, Glen Rock was number-two, would happen, but that one no longer even exists, so it's just good to have that information out there. Thank you for diving in, it's so much data and I think it's all helpful.
Thank you. And I think that, I mean, which, if you go down into the, into the data later, you'll see that the way that they determined their rankings at that time and the, the way that they weighed that information is not even the way that it's even currently weighed and understood at this time. So, all right.
Just wanted to echo that it was relevant and helpful and I definitely look forward to having more discussions about this after the community has had a chance to digest the information as well as hearing more from administration and teachers. But thank you very much.
All right, so it's eight-twelve and we are opening our first of two public comment sessions. Please walk to the, oh, yes, okay, yes, you're right, thank you. Pause on the eight-twelve. And so, I was actually thinking about, oh, it'll only take like two seconds. Just to kind of give a preface to the reason why we're all here today, you know, I, I, I am happy to always, you know, give, you know, speeches off the cuff and today is not a day to do that. It's definitely a day to read my paper that I've prepared thoughtfully to make sure that I, you know, cover all bases, so just bear with me. Tonight, the board is voting on two resolutions related to district leadership. The first approves a settlement and release agreement with Dr. Brett Charleston, which results in him resigning from employment effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six and him releasing the board from any potential claims. The second-related resolution approves his paid leave of absence effective immediately through his resignation date for personal reasons. Together, these resolutions reflect a mutual decision to conclude Dr. Charleston's employment a little less than one year earlier than his existing employment contract would have ended. To be clear, there is no lump sum payment being offered by the board as part of this agreement. Moreover, the agreement represents a mutually negotiated separation reached after months of careful review, consultation with counsel, and serious deliberation by this board. Our goal throughout has been to protect the district's financial interests, ensure stability, and move forward responsibly. The board has weighed every concern carefully in reaching this resolution. While I cannot discuss personnel details, I can share that the settlement provides the district with clarity and closure. It allows us to plan for the future and maintains continuity for our students and staff. While the law has required us to manage this process in silence, we are grateful to have reached an outcome that this full board can support. Our next steps will be to appoint an acting superintendent at our November tenth meeting, ensuring a smooth transition and continued focus on student success. Moreover, our board's goal is to have a permanent superintendent appointed prior to the start of the next school year in September, or in September of the next school year, and we will begin the process soon. Thank you to our staff, families, and community for your patience and trust. The board's commitment remains the same, to act with integrity, accountability, and in the best interest of the Glen Rock students and the school district. I will share a full summary next week, so everyone can feel confident that this was a sound, responsible, and forward-looking decision for the district. So you'll see a variety of communications that will come out, you know, over the next, I would say, you know, week, including on our next agenda. And then I'll provide a summary to the best that I can legally, I'll give as much information as I legally can provide and, and, you know, to help you understand what it is that you're seeing and to feel confident that this was the best decision to move forward. So, thank you. And now at eight-fifteen, we are opening our first of two public comments. Please state your name and your address and you'll have three minutes and you'll hear a nice little ringer.
Good evening, Elizabeth Card, two-three-one, Hamilton Avenue. Wow. Just wow. I just want to say thank you to this board for doing their due diligence or whatever they did to come to this conclusion. It's been a long five years, two of which I was a part of the board, so I'm aware of inner workings. I'm glad that there's an amicable resolution because I did Oprah request a lot of information that I found a little disturbing. What I will leave you with is two suggestions. Three. Mend yourselves, amend this board. You need to rebuild the trust in each other. Number two, mend the trust between the board and the community. And thank you for that report. I'm sure it took a lot of time and I think it's very important for people to understand how rankings work. Here's an opportunity for us to restart and learn from the mistakes of our past. And that being said, my only comment or criticism concern is that to have a permanent superintendent in by the next year is sort of rushing the process. Again, let's learn from our mistakes. And if that means keeping an interim superintendent for as long as it takes to find a superintendent that fits Glen Rock's ideals, goals, motivations for the parents, for their children, then let's take the time and do what's right. And let's move forward. So just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Angela Pucci Bender, fifty-five Yardley Court. I started this afternoon writing down a list of things to go down memory lane, but I don't think that that's really necessary. I'm glad that the board has finally come to a resolve with a, an individual who needed to go a long time ago. My disappointment is that there are, in my belief, from what I've seen, heard, and observed, clearly observed, that there may be one or two that still do not understand their role as a board member and that they are here for the community and our students, most importantly, our students. Dr. Robinson, I think that your presentation was great for those folks out in TV land who really don't have any understanding of what the rankings hold and how they come to be, so thank you. But however, I'm going to say that there is no reason why we are not above the regionals or up there with the, you know, the Milburns of, of the state. And I think that that's a great opportunity for a new superintendent coming in. I think that I'm going to say, from my professional perspective, I want parents to feel comfortable, the community to feel comfortable, that I believe that the next superintendent will come in like the knight in shining armor and has a staff that will welcome them openly, you know, great, great place to be. And we just have to make sure that the next board that comes on board understands the importance of selecting the right individual that fits the climate and culture of our community, not of another community, not from somewhere out of state that doesn't know a thing about New Jersey, not someone from maybe even out of the county who doesn't know Bergen County or the north section of Bergen County that we are. I think that we have a lot to gain from the lessons learned and I hope that some people really still can take what they saw happening and unfolding and learn from their mistakes. I came on in twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three. I want everyone to know that I did my best in providing what I felt was solid information to go by, but unfortunately, at that time, it just, it, it wasn't heard. And I hope that, you know, moving forward, that our new board will be able to do that because I think this is a great place to be. I love our town, I love our schools, and I know you all do as well, and I congratulate you for getting us to this point now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Kevin Carroll, twenty-six, Hope Court. Great presentation. Amazing how, no offense, a non-educator would come up with all that information and do the research. That's what central office staff should be doing, that's what administration should be doing, but kudos to you for stepping up and taking the lead. It just shows how much you care about the district and the students and the parents here for you to take the time to do that. Just like to let the board know, in Bergen County, there's probably nine to eleven superintendent jobs open as we are standing here tonight. So think about that as you do your search. Don't get caught up in doctors, don't get caught up in experience. Find a person who cares, who's genuine, whose track record shows that their community, their teachers, their administrators they work with, respect them, trust them, want them there. And if they do leave, are upset that that person is leaving. That's the person we want. We don't need a headliner, we don't need somebody who's going to come in here and make us number-two again. We need someone who's going to bring change and help our community and our school get better. Doesn't matter about rankings, niche, you can go pay. We can all pay and put our surveys in there if that's really what you want to do. NJ Monthly sold magazines when they had their monthly magazines come out every other year. They went out of business because nobody was buying it anymore. So, surveys are great, information is great, but how do our students feel? How do our teachers feel? How do our administrators feel supported by you guys and the community? I'm here to help in any way, I'm not running for Board of Ed, I just want to be here a voice for you guys and for the parents, but good job tonight, thank you.
All right, we will close our first set of public comments at eight-twenty-three. Can I have a motion to discuss? Oh, sorry. Oh, oh, sorry, yeah. Okay. We will pause on the eight-twenty-three.
Sorry. Elise Meltzer, fifty-nine, Ebbington Terrace. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed for all your hard work over these past few months. I know it hasn't been easy and you each volunteer your time and energy for our community and many of you stepped into a very challenging situation and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you all for that. And over the past few months, as I've been coming to more and more board meetings, I've noticed a real shift in the board and how they've become more transparent, you guys have become more transparent, open-minded, and a genuine willingness to hear from the community about what we want. And it hasn't gone unnoticed, so I truly appreciate that. And then the next few months will be an important time as we begin the search for the new superintendent. And my hope is that we take what we've learned these, from these recent experiences and move forward in a positive, united direction, ensuring that what happened before never happens again. We all care deeply about our schools and our town, it's why we all moved here, and it's time to bring our schools back to the standards that drew so many of us here in the first place with respect, like a lot of what Kevin was saying, just the respect of the administration and the community and the staff members. And as you move through this process, I encourage you to consider not only what the community wants in a new superintendent, but also what our staff needs. And I think the rebuilding of our morale really needs to be like a top priority to keep our teachers here and to build that rapport year after year with our teachers and our, then the teachers with the students. And we just, everything depends on a positive climate and short, strong leadership and an inspiring superintendent who can set the tone for the entire district. He's the leader and he needs to, or she, needs to, you know, really motivate the staff, the students, everybody, that brings the whole district together and the board, too.
Thank you. All right. So we'll close at eight-twenty-five. And can I get a motion to discuss G one through G ten? All right, we have Karen seconded by Dan. All right, comments?
So in regards of G one and G two, I generally don't support spending taxpayer money on money that doesn't go directly into the classroom. However, the board explored every possible alternative before reaching this decision and I believe that this is the best course of action to resolve a difficult situation and move forward. During the NJ S B A convention two, like, two weeks ago, I spoke with numerous New Jersey educators about the superintendent issue in New Jersey. They consistently informed me that towns ultimately just end up and pay. The following is not a political statement, but I do believe that things will only change when the state will start assisting local board educations with similar issues. I hope our next governor, whoever, whoever she or he may be, consider this and I promise to advocate for this issue, not just for Glen Rock, but for other towns that may face similar situation. I anticipate a lot of finger pointing in the next coming days. However, I urge Glen Rock parents and residents to focus on the future. Attend board of education meetings and voice your opinions. Ask the Glen Rock board to select a new leader who will restore Glen Rock to its rightful place as a top-ranking school district. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm, hi, everyone. I'm reading a statement on behalf of trustee Christine Parlamis, who could not be with us tonight. I'm sorry, I'm unable to be at tonight's meeting, I'm away on a trip. I want to express my support for the action being taken this evening. I believe this is an important step that will, that will at last allow our district to begin a new chapter. With this decision, we can refocus on what matters most, our community, our staff, and above all, our students.
Any other comments? Okay. Can you call roll, please?
Ms. Caricella.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Thank you. All right, can I get a? A motion to discuss B one through B six? Dan, seconded by Ed. All right. Discussion for B one through B six. Any questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead.
On with the regular business that we do all the time, it is, sorry, I switched, B three, so thanks for preparing the budget calendar. Part of the, the boring, dutiful work that we do and it's a good roadmap, it's the next six months, hard work for us, so glad to get a start and we have a timeline ahead of us for in a challenging year of budgeting, so that was my comment for that. Thank you.
All right, yeah. Thank you as well for the budget calendar, that was great. Anything else? All right, can I get roll call, please?
Ms. Caricella.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Ms. Calvez.
Yes.
Dr. Robinson.
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Can I get a motion to discuss P one through P fourteen? All right, Stephanie and Ed, seconded. Questions, comments, concerns, P one through P fourteen?
Go ahead. Just on P three, looking forward to seeing the parent wellness presentations that the staff develops, I'd like that they raised their hand to do this and looking forward to seeing what they present to us.
All right, thank you. All right, so you know other comments or questions, if you can please call roll.
Ms. Caricella.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Hayward.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion's pass. Thank you. And then you see our vandalism suspension hip reports present. All right. And we are now entering, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, just a statement, most people don't realize that when an ethic complaint is made against a board member, the board ends up paying their legal defense with taxpayer money or insurance money, which is basically taxpayer money. I truly believe that my ethic complaint against Mrs. Rundell, Ms. Rundell was valid. However, since she resigned from the board and I do not want to spend taxpayer money and see them move the way from education, I've decided to withdraw the complaint against her.
All right, thank you. At 8:31, we are opening our second of two public comments. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. All right. Seeing no members of the public for a second set of public comments, we'll close also at 8:31. Our next meeting is next Monday when we'll return back from school, plenty on the agenda, this agenda is already posted, so take a look and we'll see you then. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this if it's out of order, but on G8 for the boosters, can I just thank them for their donations? They have done so many things for our district, from scoreboard to the beautiful patio out by the snack stand, so they're donating pennies and a broadcast post desk. And I just really want to thank the people who are behind that because they've done tremendous things and all the volunteers that work in the snack stand also because they collect money.
They do. They were hard at work this, this, just recently for our win on Friday, so that was great. So thank you for mentioning that. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, Ed, seconded by Liz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. What do you know?[1763.19]